Morning.
Good morning.
I didn't get a word to the phone.
That's okay, if you want to come in, then we actually have this.
Okay. I'm not sure.
How are you?
It looks like you're running for something. I'm not sure.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I think I'll just let him do his magic.
Okay.
Hey, sorry, I missed Monday.
Sorry.
I was.
Very lovely.
But she did a nice art. I was very impressed.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good.
Hopefully.
All markets people want.
Good.
I think Jason.
Morning, Mr. Sir.
Morning. How are you? You are well.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Yes, you are.
Morning.
Good morning, sir. All right, this meeting's only gonna take a half hour.
Okay. Then that answers that question. You don't need to say anything more.
Maybe twenty minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
If you understand the English part, I'm gonna say it.
Exactly.
Like you told me, this is the definition of blowing.
Yes. But I didn't say. No, I said it in jest. Because I know he's not.
I agree.
He gives me a reason to give up.
Hello?
Which is all.
Hello?
Good morning, Commissioner America.
Good morning. All right, fifty minutes. Hey, Commissioner?
Yes.
Can you put your phone on mute because we're getting background noise?
I have it on mute. That's not my phone, I have it on mute.
Is there somebody else on the line?
Anthony was on the line.
Yeah, it's. It's gone, whatever it is, it's gone.
It's gone.
Well, the ghost caller.
Yeah. Okay, good morning, may I ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we have so much to praise and thank you for this day. The gift of another day of life, the seasons of life we experience in our valley, and the new life that springs that spring brings forth with growth and hope. As the farmer plants his crops and raises his livestock, may you bless each one of them with a bountiful year. We thank you for the agricultural labor that provides us our earthly food. We are in the holiest week of the year as we celebrate Passover and Easter. We remember the unmeasurable sacrifice of your son who died for each one of us in his resurrection to give us our spiritual food and hope of eternity. In the book of Isaiah, you tell us, "Do not fear, for I am with you; do not be dismayed, for I am with you, because I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you; I will uphold you in my righteous hand." We pray our hearts will be changed as we seek your wisdom and truth. Our prayers to you are never in vain as you instruct us to seek you in everything. May we take that moment and seek you daily, listen, and follow your guidance. We pray for the strength to stand our ground against evil. For you would not send your son for us to stand alone. You are constant at work for your children, protecting and shielding them from darkness of evil. Help us to flee those situations that are not in your favor. We ask for your protection and guidance as we journey through the blink of an eye, that is life. May our work this morning be in accordance with your will. May we feel your presence and peace this day. These things we humbly request in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, everyone, we'll convene the commissioners' public meeting at this time, and we have Commissioner Mayor Beato by phone. He's on vacation in Everton Township at Mayor Beatalago. Enjoying his vacation at the resort. How you enjoying vacation, Commissioner?
I was in all day yesterday, I don't think this vacation's gonna happen. We will try.
Okay. All right, well, thanks for joining us.
Okay. So you want a motion to approve the minutes?
Please.
I'll second that motion.
All favors say aye.
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 Okay, public comment on the items only at this time? Yes, Tom? Hey, please come up to podium. This is only on the gen items. Thank you.
Morning, Tom Adams, Williamsport. Just wanna have a couple, I guess, questions about the library, the funds. Are there any conditions on the money, given case, like if there's books that maybe shouldn't, maybe be in there for kids to be get at? I mean, I don't believe in complete censorship, but I think there's certain materials shouldn't be within the reach of kids or maybe in their eyesight. Do we have any plans or any committee that can check that, or if anyone has a complaint, I guess those things can be checked in, so?
Well, Mr. Mayor Beato, Commissioner Mayor Beato is on the library board. So if we have any concerns, we'll bring it to him to address with the board.
And I'm partly at fault, because I'd love to get to the library once a week, and it's been like once every six months. And I see some things that are concerning, like when climate change is presented as fact, evolution is presented as fact, and some of the other things. But, you know, you're gonna have that stuff, but it just sometimes may just look things a little closer. You know, I can only look at myself for not being a little more vigilant.
Absolutely, thank you. If you have any concerns, bring it to our attention. Great, thank you. Okay, move on to proclamation.
Okay. Pennsylvania 811 proclamation. Whereas the month of April 2023 recognized as Pennsylvania 811 Safe Dig Month, and the initiative sponsored by the Pennsylvania 811, a utility notification information center with over fifty years of continuous service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas Pennsylvania 811 received over one million excavation notifications in 2022, and trans- notifications to their member facility owners and operators, allowing essential utility and construction crews to provide vital underground services and repair for the critical infrastructure to communities throughout Pennsylvania. And whereas when contacting 811, at least three business stays before digging, a homeowner or contractor is connected to the unique service that notifies the appropriate underground utility operators in the municipality in which the work is to be performed. Whereas by notifying 811 of their intent to dig, the homeowner or contractor is knowingly helping to protect the underground utilities, themselves, the work crew, and their neighbors from any unsafe digging practices within their community. And whereas upon receiving the notification from Pennsylvania 811, the facility owners and operators disperse to the said work site to mark the approximate locations of their underground utility lines with flags, paint, or both, to establish the eighteen-inch tolerance zone of the outside wall or edge of their line or facility. And now therefore, it be resolved that Lycoming County, in support of Pennsylvania Underground Utility Line Protection Law, P.A. Act 287 of 1974, as amended, we do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month, and encourage all Pennsylvanians to visit the Pennsylvania 811 website at www.pAonecall.org for information about digging safely. Signed by Commissioners Scott Metzger, Tony Missair, and Rick Mayor Beato. Being in the construction field, I can't tell you how many times, and we call 811 all the time, how important it is to make that call. If you think you're getting away with it by not making it, you are putting people in peril. There are many times where homeowners have done underground gas lines that no one knows about. You know, putting a gas line from your house to the garage, and you didn't report that. Then somebody else comes in to dig and hits it, and explosion happens. It happens often throughout the nation every day. Water lines are put in, electrical lines, gas lines. And it's not only important to contact them, it's also important that they have a record. And I believe, and I don't think Amy's here today, but G.I.S. is mapping those utilities throughout our municipalities, so that there is a record. And it is very important, so call 811. It's vital.
It is, and being from a family of builders, it is vital that you call because those gas, those gas leaks can't happen. You accidentally hit something, and explosion happens, and you lose their lives, lose their homes. So it's vital, utilities, fiber optic lines now on the ground. You do a lot of damage, and a simple phone call, three days in advance, for them to come out, identify what needs to be done. It's just, it's proper planning to avoid an unnecessary tragedy by making a simple phone call.
I don't see anybody here to accept this.
I don't either.
Hogs up the floor.
Yeah.
Come on up there, Sheriff.
I didn't bring my shovel.
But they bring his shovel.
Jason has his shovel.
You dig your own hole.
They bring us to our attention every year, and it is something that is very serious. And we want to avoid any possible tragedy by making a phone call. And for these individuals that are willing to come out to your site and investigate and make sure, it's just the proper thing to do.
Yeah.
Being responsible. Okay, Commissioner, you have anything else you want to add?
No, I echo both of your comments, but I'm targeted.
Thank you. Okay, reports. Kayla? Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Presented for your ratification are invoices due through April 12th of 2023 to be paid on April 5th, 2023 in the amount of $411,616.06. The breakdown is as follows, with 53.52% being funded by the general fund at $220,310.23. 19.26% is being funded by grants and other sources at $79,257.60. And 27.22% is being funded by RMS at $112,048.23.
Okay. Motion.
I move. I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the proclamation for one minute, and we talked about digging, and this isn't just maybe putting an addition on, or, you know, building a home. This is something as simple as maybe doing a new driveway, digging a new driveway or your sidewalk.
Plowing a new rose bush.
Yep, so little things like that are things that you should also consider calling, that things that you wouldn't even think about. But once that shovel goes into that ground, or that backhoe, whatever goes into that ground, is you're starting to do the process of digging, and that's when you should notify 811. Thank you. Okay, personnel actions.
All right, seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of a background check and other employment conditions. For facilities, Elwood Hoover, maintenance two position, full-time, new position, hired at 20 eighty per hour, and he's anticipated to start on April 17th. Also for facilities, Hunter Black, maintenance two position, hired as a full-time replacement, also at 20 eighty per hour, and anticipated to start on April 24th. For RMS, Paul Nixon, grounds crew mower, a part-time new position, hired at $14 per hour and not to exceed 1,000 hours in a year, anticipated to start on April 10th. For RMS, George Metzger, grounds crew mower, part-time, new position, hired at $14 per hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours, anticipated to start on April 10th. And then for budget and finance, David Burkhardt, a general accountant position, hired as a full-time replacement at $49,237.50 per year, anticipated to start on April 17th.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry, thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Okay, 4.2. Commissioner, seeking your approval on Resolution 2023-08 for the Old City Williamsport mixed-use development project in the.
Wait, you missed, you missed one.
I did. I jumped right to mine.
I'm surprised the sheriff didn't jump on that.
4.1.
I have my glasses on.
Commissioner, seeking your.
They're on your forehead. They're up on top of your head. You're looking for them. Okay, go ahead.
4.1. Commissioner, seeking your approval on the collective bargaining agreement with Lycoming County Deputy Sheriff's Association. This is a 2023 budget item.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments from anyone?
Yeah, I'm glad it was accepted.
Yes.
They have a huge responsibility to this community and to our courts, as well as, you know, when law enforcement from around the county get into some situations, especially with active shooters, they won't hesitate to call our sheriff's department and our sheriff, who sends those people out to those, you know, sometimes really dangerous positions. And what we pay them is, I feel, is very fair. But nonetheless, it's very, it's a service that, I don't know, you can't put a price on it. They may not come home from work. And that is, that is a huge responsibility for the men and women of our sheriff's department.
I worked with the sheriff's office for thirty-two years, and hand in hand, you know, it's a very dangerous job. They serve, there's two, two, two of the top, unfortunately, two of the, two of the top ways that a sheriff or a police officer gets in a situation results in fatality for that officer. It's a traffic stop, and serving a PFA. Our sheriff served 500 PFAs a year. And there's a lot of them that have to do with firearms. We had an active shooter situation approximately a year and a half ago that involved someone from APO, and one of our deputy sheriffs. Fortunately for their training, if it wasn't for their training and their alertness, they were in a rural area that had no cell service. They would not be here today. They returned fire, and eliminated a threat that unfortunately ended in the loss of life. But nevertheless, it was justified. And thankfully, those two officers are here today with us. It's a very dangerous job. And any given moment, we could be standing in service with their family members, and thank God we haven't. So it's important that we have trained deputies here, good deputies, and I believe that Lycoming County does have excellent deputies on your force that are at all times professional, and we want to thank them for their service. We're glad we got this done. Again, it's a thankless job, but it's a job that they serve the public, and they do it with honor and integrity, and we appreciate each one of them. We want to thank you for your service. Commissioner Mayor Beato.
One of the, I would say, one of the positive aspects for both of you and the county is that we've established the ability to have sort of a career ladder within the sheriff's deputy workforce. So upon completion of certain goals and metrics, they can move, move up. And this is a way both to reward people for investing in themselves and in their training, and also as an incentive to have people stay longer on the job. And so we're, we're very proud to have been able to accomplish that in the negotiations with the union and, of course, with the help of the sheriff, in being able to craft that type of job ladder, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. I just want to say thank you.
Just state, state your name and rank.
I'm not used to coming up.
Aye.
My name is Coral Finery. I'm a deputy sheriff with our Lycoming County Sheriff's Office. I'm also the president of the Deputy Sheriff's Association. Again, thank you to the commissioners and to the negotiations team. On behalf of you, Director McDermott, Director Seagraves, and Attorney Wiley, this was a group effort with the proposal that we came up with as a team, and all the deputies involved. We presented it to your negotiations team, worked very well with them. There was no arguing, no bickering, this, this went very smoothly. Over the course of, what, ten months now, we worked it out to what was easily acceptable on your terms and for our terms. The recognition that you've taken of us is greatly appreciated. And with the changes that we've made for the current contract, I believe we're now coming up to where we're more competitive with the other law enforcement agencies in the county, to hopefully continue to attract people to come to the office, as long, as well as keeping people here within the office. So again, thank you to everybody involved.
Thanks, Coral. Okay, thank you. Hey, Sheriff, you got three minutes.
How long do I have?
Three minutes.
Every time I come up for you, you turn this thing over. Do you have the big one?
That's a five-minute one, here.
I'll take it.
Here's the three-minute one.
Give me.
There's an empty seat.
You gotta do all three.
Sit down.
I'm not running for commissioner. I'm smart. At any rate, I've.
You hear that, those two out there?
I want to thank, I want to thank the CBA, or rather, the CBU with the work they did, and then Colonel McDermott, and Solicitor Wiley, and Director Seagraves with the, with the CBU for the past eight or ten months. This is a back-and-forth process, it's important, and I think Commissioner Mayor Beato mentioned it. This gives us that ladder to be able to, to look ahead, you know? Employees like to know that they can go someplace. Many employees will sit and want to be stagnant, but many employees want to achieve, and they want to do better. And this CBA does that. I think it's fair, I'll make one mention, the starting salary for the deputy sheriff, five years ago, the first year of this, of the last contract, was $18.34. The starting salary never changed. It was $18.34 for the past five-year period. This changes that, it makes us, it makes our ability to seek good candidates, it makes it more attractive for us to do that. And of course, you have to put a price on everything, no matter what the employment, you know, no matter what field you go into professionally. But it's interesting, and I go back to Commissioner Missair in our early years together. He would say, "Sheriff, have you ever been shot at?" "Sheriff, have you had to shoot somebody?" Well, sadly, in the last two years, three years, we've had four deputies shot at, and we've had deputies have to take a man's life who tried to kill them. So it really brought reality around with what we have to deal with out here. Commissioner Metzger, you mentioned 500 PFAs. When I, when I arrived in office, a long time ago now, Solicitor Smith had, I think, a little more hair, not as white. I knew him when he had brown hair, though. When I got here, we had about 200 PFAs that were issued in 2010. I think this past year was over 500, and we're probably on a mark to do 600 first abuses this year, which shows the challenges that we have out here on the street. So I want to thank, I want to thank the team, both, both sides of the aisle, or sides of the table that worked on this, and the new commissioners for approving this, because it's gonna really help us to keep where we needed to stay with the good candidate. So as always, thank you for your support.
Welcome, thank you.
I reserve my time. I have three minutes left.
That's the first time I've seen Sam left, the extra veins left when you're speaking anywhere.
I reserve my time, but I'm done yet.
Not done yet.
Jenny, would you like to say something on this time?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye? So carry.
Okay, 4.2. Vote to approve Resolution 2023-08, projecting the amount of $1 million.
Is this the, the?
Yeah.
Okay. No motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
I'd just like to make a comment that, well, I think it was my first term when, when we sat on that first committee about the old city, the gateway is what we called it. And just in that ten-year period, with a lot of help from Lycoming College and the vision of Dr. Tracty, we're seeing it come to fruition. There's a lot of planning that's involved, and our planning department was part of that equation as well. But when, now, when you're driving down the Beltway and you see the vision of that group to turn that gateway or the old city into what it's going to become, and what it is currently now, is such a wonderful improvement, and it's gonna, it's gonna attract, it's going to attract a lot of students coming to our area.
Commissioners, just to clarify, the, the resolution itself is for the RACP.
RACP, you're right, okay. And again, as you drive down Third Street, you can see the fences up there, the equipment's ready. I think they're gonna break ground here very soon. From our last meeting with them, they said that they anticipate the completion of that first part by November. So you'll see that first part going up, you'll see stores in there, some townhouses, and, and the plans are beautiful, so if they have it completed by November is, that'd be really awesome to see going down Third Street.
You know, when we think about both colleges and we think about the issue of repopulation of our county, it plays such, they play such a vital role in bringing people here who sometimes stay. I can think of half a dozen people at the top of my head, and I'm not from here originally, but who came to Lycoming or Penn College and who ended up staying here. So the work we do with those two institutions is really vital to helping us repopulate where we've gone, you know, to, from 120 down to about 112,000 in the last twenty years. So this is, this is a welcome addition, and we do thank Lycoming College for their stepping out on this. So this is, this is a welcome addition and, and we do thank Lycum College for their stepping out on this.
Yep, and that's true. The former director of probation before Bob McColl was there. Pete Picaro was from New Jersey. He went to Lycum, he stayed here, still lives here. We have many, many people like that, that stay in the area. My old partner of work, Lou Yengling, he's originally from Baltimore. He lives in Unityville. He went to Lycum, made, he loved the valley, loved the, the area, loved the mountains, decided to stay here. And that's what we want. We want people to stay in our area and that helps grow our, grow our, grow our tax base. Okay. We got a motion on that. We can delete that, so we're on four point three, Matt?
Yep. Commissioners, seeking your approval of the following award of grant funds to Camp Cadet in the amount of $3,000. Lycum County Library System in the amount of $1,346,007. To Lycum County Airport, $56,000. And to the Lycum County Industrial Development Authority, $3,000.
Have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
I have a question. The $56,000 to the airport, what's that for? Is that for the tower?
I didn't see it.
I'll double check.
I, I didn't see it in my packet.
Yeah, I was looking for it.
I'll double check.
Okay, I want, I want to, I want to find out before I vote on that one.
Okay. So you want to table the airport?
I want to table the airport one for now until I find out what the money's being spent off. It's, it's for the tower and I'm fine with that.
How about I revise my motion to say that I move to approve Camp Cadet, Lycum County Library System, and Lycum County Industrial Development Authority?
Okay. You made a motion, second?
I'll second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And I'd just like to make a comment on, on the library. Although we don't always agree with what they may display at the library. I would be very fearful if elected officials would pool funds from a library or tell a library what, what they can or cannot buy. That would be censorship. And I don't believe that that's, that has any place in a library. I, I can disagree with putting them on display, okay? Or promoting certain books. But to say you cannot have them or purchase them would be a violation of what I believe in personally. Our library does a phenomenal job in our community as a whole. And we don't want to put any strains on them or restraint on them. And if you, and you go over there, Tom. It is, it's one of the most beautiful libraries you're gonna, you're gonna go into. And it does give a lot of information and a lot of opportunities for those that are underserved in our community as well.
And I agree that we've had different views on, on what happened to James Jinky Brown. However, there's six libraries in the county and they, they provide tremendous service. And they help so many people from seniors to the kids. It's a source of learning. It's vital in communities to have a vibrant public library system. And it's very, very important. And I'll put a note in for Conco Library is going to have a ribbon cutting coming up next Friday. And for their children's library, it's beautiful. They've renovated the library and I encourage everybody to go down there and check out Conco Library. They run some necessary repairs and renovations. And that's just one of the, the cornerstones in our community that has been renovated and is heavily used. It's not just in the Torresville community, it's Plunkets Creek, it's Elder Township. There's so many, there's probably about seven communities down that area that utilize just that one library alone. And you have Montgomery, you have Hughesville, you have Muncie, you have Jersey Shore. They're all necessary institutions within their communities. But it's important to work with them, not judge them, but work with them. And understand that the books are necessary for learning. They're not activists. They're not there to promote people or promote a certain cause, but they're there to learn. And they're there for a source of education and learning for everybody that comes into that place and requests certain materials so they can learn about different subjects.
So one of the, one of the things that we can be proud of is that we have a library system. You know, as mentioned, it's Muncie, Hughesville, Jersey Shore, Montgomery, Brown, and Montoursville. And what, the reason why we can be proud of that is because we seek always to try to have regionalization in services. So by having a library system, we share human, you know, they share a lot of the functions. They get help in the air, human resources and information systems and training. I've been down in Northumberland County and unfortunately, they don't have a system down there. They don't have a library system. Every library is literally on its own. So having a library system, and of course, the commissioners have a, a seat on the board of a library system. Having a library system allows us to be more competitive when we try to get grants and when we try to do things to increase the resources in the community. So, you know, I concur with my colleagues that just, what's really amazing about the location of the six libraries is that they really do reach all, you know, all parts of the county. In addition, Brown as a standalone library provides certain links and library services that, you know, in some of the outer reaches. But it's good, something we can be, we can be proud of to have this system.
And I want to commend the board for keeping an eye on the expenses. You know, the 1.3 is something that we, it has not grown. And they've been responsible in, in coming to us for an ask. And we know that expenses continue to rise, that they've done their due diligence to be fiscally sound, to make sure they cut costs. And, and they do have some ARPA requests in that we're still addressing, but we want to thank them for working with us. Okay. We've passed that.
Four point four, Jenny.
Good morning, commissioners. This is ratification of the Riverwalk Extension DCNR Grant Resolution. We are applying for a $2,071,291 grant. I think I said that right, for DCNR for the Riverwalk Extension. It's a construction grant. And it'll take the current Riverwalk from where it ends at Maynard Street to Reach Road and connect it to Sescuhana State Park and Penn College. It's a 50/50 matching grant. And so the remainder of the funds would come from county either Act 13, ARPA funds, or other grants that we're going to be seeking to support the project.
We're blessed to have the Riverwalk in our area. It's heavily, heavily used by peasants from all over, even visitors. And it's, it's a beautiful attraction to our valley. And again, this is another way to extend it to Sescuhana State Park, which is, I think, a hidden gem.
Yep, and it's a top 10 trail gap in the state, this current settlement over here. So we're very excited to help close the gap.
And I think the only time people really visit Sescuhana Park is when they go down to Hiawatha. It's a very nice park up there and this way we can extend it a little bit further so people can see the park up that way. So, a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, four point five through four point seven, Nancy?
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning, Nancy.
Four point five is juvenile probation and asking for your approval for a new contract for drug and alcohol rehabilitation services. There is a 43 beds at Mano House, which have a supervised independent living of 18 beds. It's a residential treatment program for adolescent males, which provide an array of counseling services to help them free themselves from addiction and its associated problems and enable them to lead a rewarding, responsible life. The per diem for Mano's house is $134.04 a day and the supervised independent living is $196.25 a day.
Okay, motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Nancy, before we go on, could you explain what your role is?
My role in juvenile probation?
Yes.
She's the great negotiator.
That's right. Yeah, I, we go out, or the placement officers go out and look for suitable treatment services for our juveniles. And then they contact me and we work together to arrive at our contract prices.
I ask this question because we've had a meeting with the superintendents this week and we will have a follow-up meeting within two weeks. And it's dealing with troubled students or disruptive and their behavioral health.
Mm-hmm.
Should you be included in this conversation? Would it be a help?
I facilitate the paperwork. The two people you'll probably want to talk with is our chief, Matt Yonkin. And then there's Adam Gare is our placement officer.
I think you want to speak to the officer who's in charge, actually in the schools.
Well, we, we invited Matt Salvatore and.
Two officers in schools, yeah.
Yep, you need Matt Salvatore from Children in Youth, too.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item.
Four point six is an amendment with George Junior Republic to add a secured detention program. That, that per diem is $751.05. We have basically no intention of using it unless we absolutely positively have to. But we added it in, so it's just part of the, the contract that's going to come up for renewal here in, in July.
Okay, is that to avoid like situations where we have to drive to Ohio for placement, someone out there?
This is going to be that if we absolutely positively have to get a kid off the street because he is a threat to the community, like some of the things that have been going on here recently. If we can't get them in somewhere else, we will put them there as a last-ditch measure, too, to protect the community.
Okay. All right, a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
And it is a 2023 budget item, I see that, so all in favor, say aye.
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 And then a four point seven is the 2023-24 contract with Crossroads Counseling. That's a renewal. There are increases across the board. They are trying to even the playing field for everybody, so we're all paying the same. But the only two programs we use from Crossroads is behavioral health evaluation, that's $350, and the psychological evaluation assessment, which is $500. And those two programs, there was no rate increase. Again, we just put all the programs in there, so if we need one, we don't have to go back and do an amendment.
Okay. Motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Commissioners, have a good weekend.
Thanks, Nancy.
You too, thank you, Nancy. Go back to four point three real quick. Director, could you please make a note that, let me get us an answer for the airport?
I did.
And then we'll put that on the agenda for next week.
Yep.
Once we have an answer.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay, Jerry, four point eight?
Morning commissioners, Jerry Kennedy, Information Services. For you this morning is a staffing supplemental request, a contract with Real IT Care for $185 an hour to provide some services as we are searching for staff to fill our three vacancies, one of which has been open for almost two years now.
Jerry, a few questions. How many hours do you anticipate utilizing Real IT?
Currently, we have $150,000 budgeted.
Budgeted $150,000?
That is for contracted services altogether. I will have to manage that pool. At this point in time, Real IT is telling us that they can only give us someone, about eight hours to maybe, maybe 16 on occasion per week. Really not what we need, but it's what we can get.
Okay. When you look at the contract, what percentage of the time will Real IT come on site versus dealing with it remotely?
We are intending to have them on site in four-hour blocks. If they come for a day, they come for a day. If we only need them for, you know, four hours that morning to handle a particular task or they need to move on to another client in the afternoon or, you know, something to that effect, we're going to work with them to get what we can get.
And so in that $150,000 that you've budgeted, is any travel time included in that or?
In this, in this particular agreement, as long as we're within, staying at four-hour blocks, they're not charging us any travel time.
Staying within four, okay. All right, so on regular hours, it's 185. Overtime, it's basically 277.50.
Mm-hmm.
And I bring that up because at any time when you were fully staffed, would we need to use a vendor such as Real IT?
This is the first outsourcing that we've done, with the exception of some temporary hires that we had back in 2012, 2013. We did a temporary service to do a Windows 7 upgrade.
Jerry, if you were a full complement, which title, job title would be completing these tasks?
Either a senior system administrator or a technical analyst. There's one senior administrator position open and two technical analyst positions open. Those are currently slated at $65,000 and $55,000 starting salaries.
We're not able to attract anybody at those salaries?
We're not able to attract anybody at those salaries.
At 55 and 65?
We've had, we've had employees, working here at 43 are now making 70-plus at entry-level positions.
In other words, they started here and then left.
Right.
In real short order, yeah.
And these are the challenges we face with, with, we don't make widgets. We can't continue to increase the fee because the taxpayer pays for it. So we have to figure out a way to balance it.
That we do. You know, some of these positions were, you know, recently as low as 43,000. We've update, upped them a little bit to see what we can attract. And we're still not attracting, but we still have a job to do.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Jerry.
I think I would just add one thing that, you know, tie up your entire contracted services budget just for this means that there are other actions that we can take.
Okay, and you have addressed different ways of recruiting. We've talked to you about that, different ways to try to bring people to the county.
Yep, we have a technical college just a few blocks up the street and we've communicated. I'm actually on the technical, the curriculum advisory board for the technical side of it. Corresponded with some folks up there, provided our job descriptions and our openings. And I think we may have had one or two applicants that were on the opposite side of the house, the software side versus the technical side. And we didn't have any positions for them at the time.
And in our recent conversations, it's not just Penn Colleges. We have nine or 10 universities within an hour, hour and a half from here. We had to make sure we expressed what we have here, not just in, not just in the pay, but the benefits, you know, the wellness center, you know, good health plan, pension plan, things like that, that, that do add another 20 to $25,000 to that employment package.
When we sit down, we're. When we sit down with our interviewees, we, uh, we do stress as much as we can. Um, we're sitting right on top of the, the med center, so we certainly fit that in, and, uh, try to, uh, promote the, the pension program, et cetera. Um, there's just, there's a big gap that we're trying to fill with soft, quote-unquote, soft benefits.
As someone graduating from that curriculum, they're not going to fit the need for this.
No.
It needs experience.
Yes, it's experience, yeah.
And so, so, I mean, it's, it's nice to be able to recruit them from college, but they're going to be entry-level.
Yeah.
We need very experienced people.
The top position is that we'd expect someone to have ten to fifteen years' experience.
Senior administrator, you said.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Jerry.
Okay.
So, one of the, one of the areas where we may not push as much as we can is the, is the amount of time that employees get off. And I, I think Commissioner Metzger, you've mentioned this, that, um, you know, once you get a certain amount of seniority between the eleventh holiday, you begin to accrue, and I, I forget what year of service it was that you said.
Yeah, after, after year twelve, you basically have, uh, between the holidays and now, it's, it's called scheduled time, so you don't get sick time. It's all lumped together, you get so many days per month, but it adds up to, uh, two months per year, uh, workdays between your holidays and between everything you accumulate. It comes out to, you know, basically, you know, that many, you know, you're getting off two months per year, which is, which is a huge benefit.
That's a lot of stuff.
You know, you, we have CEOs that don't get three weeks' vacation, they get maybe two. Um, you know, and, and you're, you're getting basically the, the, you know, the three weeks and, and everything with your, with your other time that you accumulate, and the holidays are ten holidays, and, um, so it, it was, it's something that keeps a lot of employees here. That's a, that's a huge benefit that-
Eleven holidays.
Eleven holidays, I'm sorry.
Isn't it eleven?
Yes, eleven, it's eleven. So, that's, that's a benefit that's not talked about nearly as much as it should be.
Exactly, right. That's, that really, that's my point, that we, we got to really drive that home.
And you have places out there, you get a week's vacation, but you don't get paid. You know, that goes on a lot. They, or they close down a plant for a week, but you're not being paid. So, uh, you're getting paid while you're, while you're off. So, it's, it's a huge, huge benefit. And these are things that, that I know that HR and the department head talks about at the interviews. Um, but again, it comes down to where, we're in a situation today where the economy's horrendous, and people are trying to maintain their bills, pay their mortgage, pay their childcare, pay the gas, and they're looking at the, the dollar, the dollar amount. They're not looking in the future, they're trying to survive for now. And, and those, you know, I said a couple times that it costs ten thousand, three hundred dollars more to live today and maintain the same exact lifestyle that it did two years ago. You're not improving your lifestyle. To maintain the same lifestyle you had two years ago, it's ten thousand, three hundred dollars more. And, uh, and you, and someone who's making thirty, forty thousand dollars a year, they're now thrown into the poverty range. And they're making cuts, and they're making sacrifices, and they're putting five dollars in the gas tank instead of twenty, and, uh, and they're looking at generic foods to buy instead of, uh, other foods. And, uh, and that's a sad situation to be in, and it's getting worse. So, people look at the bottom dollar once they're getting paid per hour.
Yeah.
Because they have to survive, they can't think about the future. And we have that responsibility because ultimately it's tax dollars, and we have to find that delicate balance and think outside the box.
Okay, motion?
Thanks, Jerry.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, Mark.
Where do you advertise these positions?
Uh, indeed. Yeah, indeed, there's, there's different sites we advertise it on.
County webpage.
Yeah, they, Jess has put on several sources out there, it's called Nationwide. We've contacted schools, done multiple measures. And when Jess is here next time, we'll have her answer that question when you're around us, so she can, she can nail every single one of them, because her, her and Ally have done a tremendous job at getting, uh, jobs out there. Thank you, Jerry. Jason?
Good morning Commissioners, morning boss.
Morning.
Uh, four point nine. Four point nine is the approval of the proposal for us to submit a response to the Mifflin County and Judy Anna Canal, county request for municipal waste disposal capacity. As, like Cumming County is currently going through their solid waste plan, uh, so is Mifflin and Judy Anna. It is the county's responsibility to ensure that they have waste disposal for their citizens for ten-year increments. So, we as a landfill facility will submit a proposal, it's no cost to us, it's just simply paperwork. We submit a guarantee that we will allow capacity in our facility for Mifflin and Judy Anna County, just like Wayne Township well, Northern Tier and all of them. So, while we all compete, but we also have to have capacity for each other. So, this is simply a proposal that, uh, your signature will submit it, and it will be, be brought up. So, mostly all the facilities surrounding Mifflin and Judy Anna will be named in the proposal. So, that way, once we're named, um, we can receive waste from those counties. I think we've only received like fourteen hundred tons from Mifflin anyways, but we still, it helps to be named in their plan.
Okay, motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, before you go, I have a question. This is something that I constantly get picture sent to me from different residents, and this is, uh, something that has not been addressed, and it continues to happen. The recycling center, drop-off center of West Third Street is an absolute pigsty. And they say they have cameras there, no one gets arrested, um, it, it's, it's a weekly occurrence. It's getting worse. Um, what can we do about this? Do we have to shut it down to get people's attention? What do we have to do to realize that we're serious about this, that we're not going to continue to let this be a, a dump? It's become the city dump of the west, where people are just dropping anything there, and it's disgusting what they're leaving.
Commissioner, I think it's, it's important that we recognize the two entities. Our responsibility is to, uh, maintain the containers, pull the boxes, and the materials. The city of Williamsport is ultimately responsible for the site itself. Uh, that, I, we have passed on our concerns, as I know you have, and done our best that we can to pass along. Ultimately, if the two parties deem that they want to have a site shut down, we can do that. We will serve at the will of the commissioners and the city of Williamsport. But, uh, it's, it's, we, we do our best, we, um, even, we're just booking it right now. We go around to all the sites each spring as part of Earth Day. Uh, the management staff, myself included, will rake stuff up, clean things up, and do the best we can to help out each municipality, but you're correct. And I know in Jersey Shore right now, somebody laid an air conditioner up there and all that. And so, that's ultimately on the, the responsibility of the taxpayers of that municipality.
You know, the city of Williamsport is now cleaning that up. It's costing their taxpayers the streets and parks, having to take their time to clean that nonsense up, and then to have it hauled away at everybody's expense in the city.
Yes.
And it's wrong.
And unfortunately, Commissioner, um-
And it's not just for a while, it's all of the time.
Illegal dumping has been an issue for decades. Uh, it's just, this is an opportunity for them to centralize it. I mean, we have, we've found some new, uh, just myself and my ride to work on Route Forty-four, I've seen new, two new dump sites, people have been throwing stuff over the road. And you just explained about the cost of living going up ten thousand dollars. Well, when people start cutting costs and try to find where they can get free, free is over the bank. And that's unfortunate, because it contaminates our waterways, it contaminates the beautiful environment that we live in. We are blessed to live in central Pennsylvania, and that's unfortunate, but that is the route that some people take.
Hey, we have watched PennDOT workers for the last week and a half along the highways clean up garbage because people can't take it to receptacle in their vehicles when they get gas, or they pull over to dump in that receptacle. We now have to pay state PennDOT workers out there two weeks a year to go out and clean up their trash.
And we, we- The, uh, management staff at RMS just last week was accepted. We adopted a section of Route Fifteen in front of our facility. So, we'll be out ourselves picking up some of that, uh, up to Cemetery Road, help keep Route Fifteen clean. So, it's, we try to make every effort we can, but ultimately, when you clean it up, you're just simply making it, you're an able now, you're making it easier.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's, that's unfortunate.
See what they dump at my car wash? I mean, it's just crazy, when people do. Like to wring them up, but it's against the law.
Well, I'm at the point now where I'd be, I'd be, I'd be able to propose it, to get people's attention.
And again, I'll, I'll let that conversation between-
Yeah.
-the director administration and the board of commissioners in the city of Williamsport.
Because I'm sure the city gets a ton of phone calls, too, and they got to be tired of it themselves. So, if people can't treat something nice and take care of it for the proper reasons, well, then, when you close it, it gets people's attention.
One other thing Commissioner, what I thought about, um, eight-one-one, PA one call. We, as a landfill facility, we respond to those inquiries daily, if it's around our, around our facility and so forth. And we, as a, as a staff, we have done utility digging outside of our boundary for projects that you guys have asked us to do. And one thing that we found, and one thing we caution everybody is, is that just because it's staked, the goal is to stake the center line of whatever utility, they do have a little fudge factor, so you need to be careful. We've, we have personally, I've seen hook a fiber line that was a foot and a half away from where it was supposed to be, and it was laying over a conduit pipe, um, for drainage. So, I caution everyone to, when they're doing the digging, and most guys that are in an excavator or folks who are doing the digging, they know that you, if you're within three feet of the area that's staked, you, you have a possibility of hitting a little early, a little shallow, or whatever.
I like, you know, because we, we dug for our electrical lines, and now, you lay down your stone, you put your lines in, and then you lay down some more stone, and you lay down caution tape.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put a, a metal tape, reflective tape on it, so-
This way, when somebody's digging, they'll, they'll hit that caution tape and realize, okay. Uh, and there are a lot of good safety, uh, measures that you, you can learn about.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Condon?
We've had a lot of activity so far in the, uh, Detective Plaza in our sale, we're excited about that. Uh, we want to, uh, make sure that, that it's out there, that everyone that wants to, uh, tour this building and put in a proposal has the opportunity to do so. So, we've asked that any, anyone interested in this building, uh, please contact Maya Toon from Purchasing to arrange a tour, and, uh, so we can arrange a tour through the building, and then have a written proposal in by May the fourth. Uh, at that point, um, after May fourth, we'll start to look at the, the offers, and we'll be moving out on a decision after that, after we review everything to our due diligence, um, going forward. But we're excited so far of what we've heard, we look forward to maybe some more interest as we move forward with our plan to sell this building, move over to the Third Street Plaza on the third floor. And that would be all the county offices in this building, with the exception of the sheriff, which will, he'll be going back to his renovated third floor, in the county corner into his new building, um, once we have that acquired, so. And we're moving forward with a plan on that, we hope to have some good news in the future on that. But we can't elaborate on that this time.
This has nothing to do with county business, but I think it's really important that the American people start to pay attention to what's going on around the world, um, about our currency, and what you'll hear about digital currency, that our government's going to try to move into. Um, I have my own opinions, but you need to research it and understand it yourself. Uh, with BRICS, that's the, uh, trying to change the currency from American to, to the yen, uh, in trading in foils, this can have a devastating impact on America. Uh, so, start paying attention to, to currencies and, and what's happening, and this can happen overnight. So, do your research, start to read, start to understand, and, and you're going to see certain things falling in place that you, you may not like. And if you don't voice your opinion now, you'll have no say.
I want to add a footnote to the Wellness Center, and I want to thank Sundas' effort of coverage. Um, on Monday, we had an open house and a tour, it was, um, greatly appreciated. We had a good attendance, and a lot of people were with the positive comments. Um, but back to the insurance and how complicated this process is, and how we had to think outside the box. When Commissioner Massar came into office, the insurance was at six million dollars for the, the county employees, their dependents, retirees. Um, if we would not have done anything, anything at all, it'd be right now between eighteen to twenty million. And that's the direction it was heading in. Uh, the employees would be paying higher deductibles, they'd be paying a higher amount towards their, their insurance. Right now, they pay about twelve percent of their salary towards their insurance, um, plus the eight percent they put into the pension. So, um, it was, it was out of control, it was going the wrong direction. So, the county became self-insured, started to drive some of those costs down. The last two years, we've budgeted fourteen million dollars. We've actually spent eleven. It was actually twelve the first year, and then went down to eleven and eleven last year. So, we're going in the right direction. And one thing that Doug Forrester, uh, had stated that, that caught my attention, because I like, I like to focus on numbers, is that every dollar we spend, we get a dollar twenty on our return. And that is important, because that drives down the cost of healthcare. That helped us in the last couple of years, we're catching things early for the employees so that they can enjoy their retirement, be healthy for their families, and at the same time, they're not sick and unhealthy with major health costs that the taxpayers are paying for. Um, that's our goal, but at the same time, we can, we can drive the healthcare down and the, the cost down in the opposite direction, which we want to do. We were able to reduce the employees' deductibles this past year from some of those savings from fifteen hundred, three thousand, forty-five hundred, down to a thousand, two thousand, and three thousand. Now, there's not too many employers that lower deductibles. We were able to do that because the cost was minimal, and it was some of the savings that we had incurred. So, as we drive things down in their direction, then we keep the, the control, not complete control, but we try to control the rising cost of healthcare, which is out of this world. Um, and like I said, if we wouldn't have done anything, uh, and you, you and, and, uh, Rick went over and toured the Wellness Center and thought outside the box and brought that to our county, uh, we'd be somewhere between eighteen, twenty million right now, and in reality, we're at eleven.
I just want to add that-
So, thank you.
This wasn't just about the county. Uh, I met with a doctor yesterday, and I asked him if, if he would be interested in joining the group, if, if we expanded to other public entities. Because regardless, there's a, a base fee, and whether they're serving five hundred people or whether they're serving five thousand, it's the same, until they have to add additional staff. So, the, the doctor was really interested in, in, in the concept, per se, because, uh, Commissioner Maribito and I, we, we discussed this, uh, bringing in our own doctors, bringing in our own equipment, and what could it save us? I mean, it would, the upfront cost is pretty high, but after that, and, and you, you buy an MRI machine, and you, what are the benefits? And they were huge, I mean, uh, from not having to wait six months. I mean, you know, I had a heart attack once, and, you know, it's scary. And when you call your, your cardiologist and say, oh, I can get you in six months, what? You know? Uh, here, we're trying to change healthcare.
We saw that after COVID, people were, they'd go to the doctors during COVID, and then they called, they made me get a cancer screen, and they were three, four, five months out.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and that, you're not catching cancer-
Yeah, you can't do it. But, but the important thing, it's the concept, and to drive down the cost, and probably most important of all, is to improve the quality of healthcare, that a doctor is not taking the instructions from the hospital to say, you need to see fifty patients a day, and you, you have five minutes to spend with them. In this facility, they'll spend- In this facility, they'll spend as long as they need to make sure that, you know, they're trying to catch everything. And I, I understand that it's, it's new, there's, there's not a tremendous amount of people there yet, but nonetheless, you know, it's, the economy of scale can even bring down the cost.
Absolutely. We can partner, we can partner with the school district, we can partner with any government agency in the city. Over in New Jersey, the one site that they have, they have all first responders, police, fire, EMS, DPS. They all come together for that Wellness Center as a part. Drives down the cost for each one of those townships, which they can't afford it on their own. But this is the regionalization approach to the healthcare, and that's helping drive down costs. Commissioner, you were saying something, you were going to say something?
Yeah, well, I was just saying, yeah, I think that part of, if you look at what's happened with healthcare, you know, 50, 40, 50 years ago, you had your doctors who were, for the most part, self-employed business people who did whatever they could do, they made home visits. When, when I was an eight-year-old boy, they came to your house, and, you know, they ordered the pharmacy, and the pharmacy sent, sent someone to deliver the pedicillin, or the doctor came. And I remember many a time when, you know, my mother had to work, we were home alone, but the doctor would come and, and would take care of you. Well, it shifted from these self-employed entrepreneurs to really employees of mega corporations. And so with that change, the doctors and the directions they take, you know, one of the commissioners mentioned, you know, you're, you're going to see 30 people a day, or whatever. So part of what this does is it's getting control back of healthcare, and oftentimes, both public and private sector employers, when you say, how can we cut our healthcare costs, it's, okay, raise deductible. You know, some of the things we were trying to do, raise deductible, you're cutting care. When you raise deductibles, you may discourage people from getting tests that they need to get to determine what's going on. And so a lot of the paradigm in which we operate in healthcare is not about whether we keep people healthy, it's about how do we, how do we spend as little money as possible? So nobody wants to spend lots of money, right? Because the taxpayers, at the end of the day, but, but I think what the three of us really have come to understand is that the best way to drive down the cost of healthcare is to keep your employees healthy, and to do it in a way that they're invested in their own healthcare. So I, I think it is exciting. I'm glad that you all mentioned about, you know, getting other municipal entities engaged and involved, and, and, you know, I think this has been a process that has gone on for a number of years. Before I was here, the commissioners had been in a traditional healthcare insurance plan, and Commissioner Maser and his colleagues moved them out of that into Benetton. I think that happened, did that happen in my first term? I can't remember, Commissioner.
Your first term.
Or had it happened before that?
No.
And, and Benetton was sort of a cooperative of, of public counties, right? And, and municipalities. I think the city may still be in Benetton.
The city's, the city's permanent.
It is exciting. And, you know, it is a pathway for private and public sector employers to, to be able to sort of get a control over healthcare.
You brought up a good point that I, I can give an example of. I was speaking to the physical therapist over there the other day, we have physical therapy, and your healthcare plans give you unlimited visits. Well, after those visits, you're 100% well. And we continue to go here, unlimited visits, until you are cured of that problem. You hear your, he said that they would have just dealt with it, because they weren't going to pay 200, 250 bucks out of their pocket. And they're able to come to the Wellness Center to continue with physical therapy, and they were improving, and it was improving daily. At the same time, they realized that this person was developing high blood pressure. So the doctor over there then addressed the person's high blood pressure, which could have resulted in other problems. So it's catching things, it's, it's making sure you go through the entire process, because if you're, if you're, if you go through a surgery and you only did your physical therapy part-time, you're going to develop more problems down the road that are going to end up being higher cost. And ultimately, that comes back on everybody, and that person doesn't have quality of life. Yep, so.
You know, you think about it, we own, we own the physical therapy itself, right?
Yep.
We own the equipment.
The X-ray machine.
Right. Rather than have that equipment, now in a private, you know, in a, in a healthcare or a hospital setting, a healthcare facility, they, they want to put as many people through that they can bill as possible. We don't want the equipment to go idle. We don't want it to sit us out.
And we can depreciate that, you're right, Commissioner, we can depreciate that equipment also.
Yeah, so.
Do you have anything else, Commissioner?
No, have a good holiday, everybody.
You, you too.
Happy celebration.
Enjoy.
And happy birthday to Commissioner Metzger. Tomorrow is his birthday. We did not say happy birthday to him.
That's okay.
I'm ready?
Yeah.
Yes.
That 34th year went quick. So it's going to be tough to be 35, and, so.
Well, I'm sorry I'm not there to share the cake with you.
I'll save you, I'll save you some. I know how much you like cake. So we'll make sure we save you the, the big corner piece.
Okay.
All right. Enjoy, enjoy Maribito Lago, and enjoy your vacation.
Yeah, probably. Okay, thank you.
You too. Okay, we ask for public comment this time. Yes.
Okay, these are all from Jeff Willtry. Since the commissioners chose to defend Second Amendment rights when there were fears about losing gun rights and establish a safe zone in the county, can we expect them to have a similar response to fears about schoolchildren being shot, fears about transgender individuals not being safe to simply live, and fears about schools slash government agencies becoming two religions? Lots of your constituents are very concerned about the Sharia law being implemented in states like Texas. Put up a poster of the Ten Commandments in every classroom in Kansas. Some non-doctor needs to look at every child's genitalia, is the, is they want to play on sport. Lots of us would love to know the commissioner's thoughts on keeping the areas safe for people, all people, regardless of their gender, religion, or the amount of capital they own.
Yes. Anything else you want to make?
Yeah.
Great. Yeah. Mr. Adams, you have anything? Is he still with us?
Uh, no, no, I mean, obviously, the, we, we need to make sure that everyone is safe, regardless of, of status, as, as the person said, and the children looking back.
Okay. Nothing else online? Anything from the, anything else from the audience? Yes, Mr. Adams?
Just, John Hart, he was one of our founders, and signed our Declaration of Independence. He went through a real tough time with his family when the British were coming through New Jersey. He allowed Washington's troops on his farm, and the British didn't like that a whole lot. So he had to flee. His wife, when she was on her deathbed, he had to, he had to flee, he had to get out of the house, because she said he'd just go. And he had 13 children. He lived in the woods, in the countryside, wherever he could find sleep at night, and went around the whole time, sometimes creek beds up, up in trees, once in a doghouse. And by the time he got back, about a year later, his wife was dead, and 13, all 13 of his kids, kids were gone, and what happened to them. And then it wasn't long after that, he died with a broken heart, and he's about 68 years old. And that's the kind of sacrifice we had from our founders, and type of sacrifice that we still have from people today that fight for our freedom, and have our law enforcement, first responders, and that type of thing. Of course, sad thing is, we're all sinners, and we all, we all bring our own misery on ourselves, because there's a Proverbs 26:2 says, as a sparrow and as a swallow, they fly and flip, you know, the curse causes, will not come. In other words, we're our own worst enemies. But that doesn't mean everything bad happens to us is necessarily our fault. But we always have, we should always take a look at ourselves, I suppose, you know, when things aren't going right. And it's, just like when I made the comment with the library, it wasn't so much about censorship, it was just, you know, we was to make sure we have certain materials, maybe not at an eye level for kids. But no, I don't, I don't like censorship myself, I agree. But also, in Job 40, verse 8, Job was going through all this stuff with God, you know, and having, thinking he was righteous, and he was a righteous man, God even said he was. But God says to him, will you really ignore my judgment? Will you condemn me that you may be justified? And I think that's one of our problems, mostly in, in our society and our world today. We see in Iran, women can't even, that, here we're, that's a country where, we shouldn't be trying to work with them, you know, in, in a way that, that emboldens our government to, to have nuclear weapons. Their women can't walk the streets safely, they just have to flee, and they have to get out, because the citizens, the way it is, you know, you're second-rate citizens, and we see a lot starting in our country, because of the not upholding, upholding the rule of law. But I think it's a good thing, it's on the Web Weekly, that Lycoming College is going to have a documentary made locally with some of, one of the kids from the high school, and, and about the trafficking, you know, the 1115 and stuff. And we have to really be aware, and this is one of the reasons why we don't want the open borders, we want people to come in here responsibly, but we really have to be aware of who we're voting for nationally especially. Thank you.
Tom, I want to mention a point, you talked about human trafficking. This past Monday was an event where the, there's a national, or a local group that rescues people from human trafficking. They have done 158 rescues since last August in our area.
In our area?
In our area, yep. They just recently rescued a 14-year-old girl from Lewisburg Hotel. It's real, it's in this area. 15 is a major corridor, Route 80. We have to make sure that our children, our women, know their environment around them, when they're in parking lots, dark areas, it can happen in a split second, and they're abducted. And they have done 100, I couldn't believe, 158 rescues since last August. And there was four women, I, I thanked each one of them. They are, they are so passionate about doing this, they go out at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. I don't see how they sleep, but they're out there rescuing individuals that have been abducted. So if you see any of this, any area, you see anything suspicious in a parking lot or vehicle, please get on the phone right away, call the police. Don't, don't say, I, I don't want to be involved, or, you know, maybe, maybe not, call. Call if you see anything suspicious, because this is real, it's in our area, and we have to make sure that we attack it, and don't let it happen. And I commend those women in that organization for what they're doing. And I was, I could not, I knew what was going on, we talked about it on C cap, 15 being a major corridor. You know, you think about our, our kids are traveling to college, especially girls, they might have their own vehicle, and they're pulling into a Sheetz or any one of these fast food places, they might stop at roadside rest to use a restroom, they might be by themselves, and the next thing you know, they're abducted that quickly. So they have to make sure they have their phone, mace, a whistle, whatever it has that they have, they have to be always alerted to their environment, what's going on around them, so that they don't become one of these victims. So.
Well, to add to that, though, even in that, in that article, which I kind of knew too, is that some of these kids are being set up by their own family, their own parents, and it's just horrendous. I, I knew a girl that was, had the same situation, you know, it's just heartbreaking.
It is, it is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've completed our agenda. Our next meeting will be April 13. Excuse me? Oh, yes, go ahead, Vic, I'm sorry. I, I had my head down, I apologize.
That's okay.
So yes, we want to adjourn, we want to have, hear your comments.
Victoria Marks from Montoursville, and I did attend the Penn College presentation. It wasn't the first time I've seen something like that, actually several years ago, right here. And the only thing I want to clarify here is that trafficking is not just people from the outside coming, grabbing, and taking us someplace. As Tom said right before he left, people are trafficking their own family members. They, they target vulnerable children, boys and girls, and they are well-versed in how to groom these people so that they are ingratiated. I love you, I'll take care of you, and they establish these relationships. And it, it's happening all over, not just Lycoming, but all over, but it is happening here. And so parents, and neighbors, and friends really need to be aware and watch changes in their friends, especially people who are dealing with all kinds of family problems, and they are vulnerable. And like you said, if you see something, say something. I'd rather have somebody be wrong and, and err on the side of some serious, serious damage that gets done, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you. And human trafficking is both sexist.
Yes, it is.
It is, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we've completed our agenda, so we'll meet back on April 13, and ask everybody to please have a blessed Easter and Passover season, enjoy your weekend. Thank you.
My bad.
No worries.
Hey, Patty.
Right here. Do you want to sign?
Yeah, I'm signing, yeah.
You want it?
I'll sign upstairs.
You'll sign upstairs?
I'll put them on your desk.
Are you looking for that? Okay.
Here, Tony, I'll sign them now, because she's waiting.
Oh, is that why you're here? Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, I'll sign upstairs.
There'll be no stamp.
Okay.